Okay, it is seven o'clock. We will now open our Tuesday, December 13th Town Council meeting. We'll begin by standing to say the Pledge of Allegiance. Joe, would you lead us?
Certainly. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Joe. Okay, we have a busy early evening. We're going to start with some presentations and recognitions, and Joe will start with Firefighter of the Year.
Hope everybody's doing well, and thank you for coming out. I was a police officer here in 1990, up until 2016. And one of the first people I met, even though I may have known him as a child coming through this community, was this person, Richard Dicklenovsky. Not only was he always at that fire department when he was working or on his off time as a volunteer, as a paid firefighter, but he was always someone you can come to, talk with, sit down with. It didn't matter if you were a police officer or not, whether you were just visiting the fire department or not, he always made you feel welcomed and listened to you and made you feel appreciated for what was going on around you. And for years, you were a role model, not only to your family and friends, but to the community of Unionville, to Tonxus Ho's fire department. So this, for me, is a great honor for me to give you this proclamation. Whereas, Richard Dicklenovsky has served the town of Farmington for 61 dedicated years, starting February 20th, 1961, when he joined the Tonxus Ho's company, number one, as a volunteer firefighter. And whereas Dicklenovsky has served in many roles during his time in Tonxus Ho's company, number one, to include as a firefighter, lieutenant, captain, deputy chief, and assistant chief. And whereas Dicklenovsky has served the town of Farmington as a career firefighter for 24 years, from August 15th, 1977, until his retirement in October 31st, 2001. And whereas Dicklenovsky has continued to work diligently for the citizens of Farmington even after his retirement, his influence, his knowledge of the fire service, and Tonxus Ho's itself has been instrumental for younger members, not just within Tonxus Ho's, but throughout the entire, the entire town of Farmington. And whereas Dicklenovsky has always maintained a focus on the public good and acted to protect the public interest while donating countless hours of time, energy, and personal commitment to better our community and enrich the lives and residents of the town of Farmington. And now therefore, the town of Farmington Council hereby commends Richard Dicklenovsky for his excellent work on behalf of the community, and we hereby thank him for the selfless, dedicated, and immeasurable contributions and commitment to the town of Farmington and its residents. And we congratulate him on being named 2022 Firefighter of the Year. Dated in Farmington, Connecticut, this day, the 13th of December, C.J. Thomas, Town Council Chair.
We have this for you. We can't replace your hat, but we have that for you, too. And we don't have...
And we have one more, I believe.
Stay right up here. Mr. D'Amico.
Stay right up. We have Mike D'Amico. Joe, Joe, why don't you stay down there? We'll get some pictures with all of you.
So, Mr. Chair, thank you. All I will say is that I echo the sentiments of Councilman Capa de Farrow about the dedicated and long-serving efforts of Dick. So congratulations. So I'll let the, I'll let the citation speak for itself. State of Connecticut General Assembly Official Citation Introduced by Representative D'Amico, Representative Exum, Senator Slapp, and Senator Lopes. Be it hereby known to all that the Connecticut General Assembly hereby offers its sincerest congratulations to Dick Glanowski in recognition of your selection as Farmington's Firefighter of the Year for 2022. In your six decades of diligent and dedicated service as both a volunteer and a career firefighter, you have been a lieutenant, captain, deputy chief, assistant chief, and mentor to numerous younger members. The residents, businesses, and institutions of Farmington and Unionville have benefited from your selfless and heroic actions in promoting safety and protecting lives and property. The entire membership extends its very best wishes on this memorable occasion and expresses the hope for continued success. Given on this 13th day of December at the state capitol in Hartford, and it's signed by the President, Pro Tem of the State Senate, Martin Looney, Speaker of the House, Matt Ritter, and Secretary of the State, Mark Kohler. Congratulations, Dick.
Get some pictures?
I just want to say thank you. Councilman, thank you very much for the appreciation. I really appreciate it. I thank you.
Thank you for all you do. David, come on up.
David, would you please join me? Congratulations. I'm going to read your proclamation for you. Whereas, the Scouts BSA helps train the youth of our community with skills which serve them well in the future. And whereas, many of our youth participate in activities of the Scouts BSA which benefits our community. And whereas, one of the crowning achievements of scouting is the attainment of the rank of Eagle Scout. And whereas, David Merrimackala created an environment for middle schoolers to study plant science and nature in appreciation for gardening. And whereas, David Merrimackala used his Eagle Scout project to construct garden plots and a storage toolbox at Westwood's Upper Elementary School. And whereas, David Merrimackala's project involved planning, designing, assembling a volunteer workforce, and constructing three new garden plots for the students to utilize. The team also added soil and plants, various plants in new garden plots. Additionally, David designed and constructed a toolbox to facilitate the storage of gardening tools. And whereas, David Merrimackala has been a patrol leader and a senior patrol leader for Boy Scouts. And whereas, David Merrimackala is a senior at Farmington High School and is the team captain for the FHS First Robotics, the vice president of TRIM Honor Society, a member of the National Honor Society, a varsity debate officer, and a community outreach officer of Farmington High School Chamber Singers. And whereas, David Merrimackala has received numerous awards and recognitions, including the AP Scholar Award with honor and distinction, a National Merit Scholarship, and the John Hopkins Center for Talented Youth Grand Honors Award. And whereas, in addition to his work in the Scouts and his schooling, David Merrimackala excels in numerous extracurriculars, including martial arts, where he holds a First Don Taekwondo Black Belt and Tan Su Do Black Belt. And whereas, as a result of David Merrimackala's work, Westwood's Upper Elementary School students have an environment to observe plant life or simply practice gardening. Now, therefore be it resolved that on behalf of the Farmington Town Council, we hereby extend David Merrimackala our best wishes, and we hereby proclaim December 14th, 2022 as David Merrimackala Day in Farmington, Connecticut. Dated at Farmington, Connecticut, this 13th day of December 2022. Signed, C.J. Thomas, Chair. David, congratulations. I'd really like to know when you found time to build that shed. But this is for you. You've earned that and so much more. Thank you very much. Oh, I have one more thing for you.
Don't forget the cap.
That covers it. Thank you very much.
Okay. And we're going to call you back up in a little bit. You want to get some pictures there?
Congratulations.
You're very welcome. Thank you.
Johnny Carey will be giving our next Eagle Scout proclamation.
All right, Alexander, if you can, come on up. All right, proclamation. Whereas, the Scouts BSA helps train the youth of our community with skills which serve them well in the future. And whereas, many of our youth participate in activities of the Scouts BSA which benefit our community. And whereas, one of the crowning achievements of scouting is the attainment of the rank of Eagle Scout. And whereas, Alexander Rivard from Troop 68 Scouts BSA recently completed the requirements for Eagle Scout. And whereas, Alexander Rivard used his Eagle Scout project to create a fitness and activity area by constructing a Gaga pit, ball pit, and pull-up bar for the Fisher Meadows Recreation Park in Avon, Connecticut. Whereas, Alexander Rivard's project involving planning, designing, assembling, and volunteer workforce and constructing the Gaga pit and pull-up bar. And whereas, Alexander Rivard's Gaga pit project involved constructing a freestanding octagon that allows participants to play Gaga ball, a game that originated in Israel and is a variation of dodgeball where players strike the ball with their hand at the other player's attempt to avoid being hit below the knee. And whereas, Alexander Rivard earned his Eagle rank with two palms, he also served as a senior patrol leader, earned the National Outdoor Awards for aquatics and camping, attended the Philmont Scout Ranch, and is participating in Sea Base High Adventure in August of 2023. And whereas, Alexander Rivard is a junior at Farmington High School, is a member of the varsity wrestling team and football teams, Latin Honor Society, Latin Club, and Economics Team. And whereas, Alexander Rivard is First Honor student and was awarded the Rotary Youth Leadership Award in the spring of 2022. And whereas, in his spare time, Alexander Rivard enjoys mountain biking, snowboarding, and weightlifting. And whereas, as a result of Alexander Rivard's work, visitors to Fisher Meadows Recreation Park can enjoy Alexander's fitness and activity area. Now therefore, let it be resolved that on behalf of the Farmington Town Council, we hereby extend Alexander Rivard our best wishes and hereby proclaim December 15th, 2022, as Alexander Rivard Day in Farmington, Connecticut. Dated at Farmington, Connecticut, this 13th day of December 22nd, 2022, C.J. Thomas, Chair.
So Jonathan, come on up. Jonathan is following in the footsteps of his parents and his extended family in doing great works for the town of Farmington. And glad to see you up here. I think I've bought a Christmas tree or wreath a few times around you in the past and a few other things. So with that, let me read the proclamation. Whereas, the Scouts BSA has helped train the youth of our community with skills which serve them well in the future. And whereas, many of our youth participate in activities of the Scouts BSA which benefit our community. And whereas, one of the crowning achievements of scouting is the attainment of rank of Eagle Scout. And whereas, Jonathan Blor from Troop 68 Scouts BSA recently completed the requirements for Eagle Scout. And whereas, Jonathan Blor used his Eagle Scout project to enhance, support, and increase the awareness and visibility of the Farmington food pantry by creating professionally-designed donation bins for the food pantry. And whereas, Jonathan Blor's project involved planning, designing, building new donation bins. His bin replaced a temporary bin at the Stop &amp; Shop in Unionville, and another was placed in a new donation location at the Farmington Fire Station. Whereas, in addition to constructing the bins, Jonathan also organized and ran a food drive at George's Restaurant in Unionville, raising $164 in monetary donations and $284 in food donations. And whereas, Jonathan Blor is an all-academic varsity member of the Farmington High School Football Team and the Farmington High School Track and Field Team. And whereas, Jonathan Blor has demonstrated leadership as a youth leader at Valley Community Baptist Church in Avon, and served as a lifeguard and swim instructor at the YMCA Camp Chase and at the Avon Golf Club. And whereas, Jonathan Blor has been the recipient of numerous scholarships for his academic and leadership achievements, such as the Rotary Club of Farmington Scholarship for Academic Achievement, a Presidential Academic Scholarship Award from the University of Hartford, and a 2022 Leadership Scholarship Award, also from the University of Hartford. And whereas, as a result of Jonathan Blor's work, the Farmington Food Pantry's new donation bins enhance the visibility of the food pantry. Now therefore be it resolved that on behalf of the Farmington Town Council, we hereby extend Jonathan Blor our best wishes, and we hereby proclaim December 16th, 2022, as Jonathan Blor Day in Farmington, Connecticut. Dated at Farmington, Connecticut, this 13th day of December 2022, C.J. Thomas, Chair, Town Council of Farmington.
Okay, if all the Eagle Scouts can come up again, please. We have your state proclamations. They're just going to be read one stuff.
In the interest of time.
Yes, in the interest of time.
Congrats. 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 So congratulations, one and all, to the Eagle Scouts. So, Mr. Chair, thank you for your forbearance. So I'll read one that will satisfy for all three. State of Connecticut General Assembly Official Citation Introduced by Representative D'Amico, Representative Exum, Senator Slapp, and Senator Lopes. Be it hereby known to all that the Connecticut General Assembly hereby offers its sincerest congratulations to Jonathan, and Alexander, and David. In recognition of your elevation to the rank of Eagle Scout, the highest achievement in scouting, you can be proud of the good work that you've done for your community, which will benefit from your dedication and your perseverance. The personal qualities that have enabled you to reach this goal will serve you well in your future endeavors. The entire membership extends its very best wishes on this memorable occasion and expresses the hope for continued success. Given on this 13th day of December at the state capitol in Hartford, and it's signed by Martin Looney, President Pro Tem of the State Senate, Matt Ritter, Speaker of the House, and Mark Kohler, Secretary of the State. Congratulations, gentlemen. Nicely done.
Now we'll go into our business portion of the meeting, and I will start by just mentioning we seem a little light up front here, although I'm not wearing it right now. We've, COVID has been coming back. We have no cases of COVID, but there was close contact with the town manager, so in an abundance of safety, she is going to be joining us on Zoom. She's on Zoom now. Keith could not be here. He had a family emergency this evening. He will be back at our next meeting. That all being said, we're moving on to Item D, public hearing, of which we have none. Item E, new items, we have none. And Kat, I believe you are online also. Do we have any public comment? First, I'll ask if there's anyone here in the audience who would like to make a public comment, please come up to the podium, state your name and address. Please try and keep your comments to five minutes or less in consideration of others here. After I ask the people in the audience here, we will go to anyone online who may be having public comment. So...
Usually you're going to clear a room.
We've lost most of our audience here.
I promise this is the last time, Mr. Chair. This is it for tonight, okay?
For tonight?
For tonight, that's it.
Just want to clarify.
So it's Mike D'Amico, Six Deborah Lane, 21st District, State Rep. So I, I'm here, just really quickly, I noticed that on the agenda, Agenda Item N2, you have an action item to authorize the town manager to work with the legislative delegation to request that the State of Connecticut convey the Parson's property to the town of Farmington. So I just wanted everyone in the council and the town manager to know that I stand ready to work with you and with the State of Connecticut to make sure that this finally gets done, and I'm quite confident that it will get done this year. So, so I, I just want you to know that, you know, once you've decided what you want to do, and that's up to you, that's the council's prerogative, I am happy to help work with the DOT and with the state in general to get the right language and submit the legislation that needs to be submitted, as we've done in the past, and make sure it all gets done. The one caveat that I would give you is that although the legislative session starts in January, as you know, this isn't going to get done in January. In other words, it'll get submitted, but then the GAE Committee, the Government Administration and Elections Committee, and Kathy knows it quite well because she's testified there, and you've testified there as well. So, you know, they have to approve it, and then it has to be approved by the House, then it has to be approved by the Senate, then it has to be signed by the Governor. So it's not all going to happen in January. But I will see what I can do to get it speeded up, if possible, but, you know, don't expect it to be done by January 31st. But we've waited this long, so, you know, a couple more months probably isn't so bad. So that's, that's all I just wanted to say about that topic.
Great, thank you, Mike.
Okay, thanks.
Is there anyone here in the building who would like a public comment? Seeing none. Kat, is there anyone online who has public comment with their hand raised?
I will give it one more second, but I do not see anybody with their hands raised. All right, we have no one.
Okay, no other public comment, thank you very much. We'll go to Item G, reading of the minutes. Joe?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the November 15th, 2022 regular town council meeting minutes.
Second.
We have a motion of seconds. Any comments?
I have one correction from that, please.
Yes.
When we were talking for Agenda Item L2, we had to fix Clifton Mix. His tenure will be ending 9/30/23 for the historic district.
Okay, so in the minutes, it is the wrong year, so we're correcting the year. That's the purpose of this one here. He is filling out a previous term, and that's the completion of the term. Okay, any other questions or comments? Okay, all in favor of the minutes as amended?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed unanimously. Next is Item H, reading of communications and written appeals, unless any came in in the last minute. I think we have none. We will now go on to report of the committees, 1928 Building Committee.
Yes, so we met earlier today. Things are really moving along. They're coming up with now the 3D designs of how the original high school will look. Our goal is now is to transform it into the town hall. As you know, we talked about in the past about lack of space, how Nancy Parent and Recreation, everybody's, we're all in these separate buildings. Now this will afford the ability to not only move the town hall up to the old 1938 building, 28 building, but now use this existing as an annex and bring everybody almost into one roof, so everybody can work, you know, fluidly and more easily. We still fight with a lot of space for our probate judge, who not only does Farmington, but several other towns, so we can satisfy probate's needs with more space there. The committee plans on coming to us on the 24th of January to discuss the options and cost, and one of their proposals also would be to ask to use the ARPA funds we received last year from the federal government in order to get some of this done. And just so you know, when it does go to referendum, it's going to, either if it passes, it passes, if it doesn't, then it's to be destroyed. There's not going to be a Plan C, or a Plan D, or a Plan E. So it's all or nothing when it goes to referendum.
And we'll have further discussion on this topic during the town managers' comments. Okay.
Can I just ask one question?
Yeah.
Really quick.
Go ahead.
Just for the record, when is the referendum?
Nothing is set right now.
Okay.
We have to, that will be another item that we'll have at a further meeting. Building Committee.
Farmington High School Building Committee. So, good news, last, last week's referendum on the 8th, Thursday, passed with over a two-to-one positive vote to authorize the town to use the, an additional 9.7 million towards the overages and the alternates that were presented here a few meetings back. That's the big news. Other than that, high school construction progresses. They're doing some footings now. I saw some drainage items on site, heavy machinery's there. It's working, and it's nice to see it under construction. Our next meeting will be 12/21 at 5:00.
Great, thank you. Green Efforts.
Nothing to report.
Okay, land acquisition.
We have a meeting tonight, after this.
Okay. Racial Equality Task Force.
Nothing to report.
Then we're going on to Report of the Council Chair and Liaisons. That would be me. First, I'll reiterate what Johnny just said. Thursday, we had our high school building referendum for the additional funds, which passed, again, over two-to-one overwhelmingly. Although turnout was not as high as the previous one, it was significantly higher than all of our recent budget turnouts. So at just about 13%. Few items to note, I know Stanley Whitman House has a few events coming up. I believe Friday, they're going to have their Yuletide carolers out. The Village Green, and for those of you who are not aware of where the Village Green is, there's a big sign out front that says Village Green. It's right across from Farmington Country Club. That's owned by the Village Green and Library Association. We will, as we have been doing since approximately 2006, we will be lighting the menorah on the Village Green. We do that, we haven't been told which of the days between the 18th and the 26th that we'll be lighting it this year, but as soon as we do, it will be up on the town website, so we would love to have people join us. Usually we have about eight to 12 people. Would love to see a bigger crowd there this year for the lighting. Also, on that same spot, Christmas Eve, December 24th at 6:30, there will be carols sung around the tree. That's also an annual event. We usually get a pretty nice turnout for that. Just a reminder for all of you, please support our local businesses as you're going out and shopping way too much, as I think most of us end up doing. We've got a lot of great businesses in town that could use your support. Other than that, just, you know, before we end our meeting, just want to say to everyone, I hope you enjoy your holidays and be safe out there. As I mentioned earlier, the flu is going around, there's another strain of COVID, so just be safe and keep your distance where you can. With that, we'll move on to our next item, which is the Conservation of Inland Wetlands.
Thank you. The Conservation and Inland Wetlands Committee, or Commissions, met on December 7th. Conservation Commission did not have any new business. However, Inland Wetlands reviewed several items. They voted to approve the installation of a septic system at 26 Tane Mountain Road, the construction of a new house on Lot 8745 River Road with certain conditions. They also voted unanimously to elect Commissioner Hannan as the chair. Commissioner Isma... They also voted unanimously to elect Commissioner Hannan as the chair, Commissioner Isner as the vice chair, and Commissioner Statchen as secretary.
Great, thank you. Board of Education.
Board of Education, so, as most of you already know, there's been a lot of news. At their November 14th meeting, after public comment from several students and residents on the importance of adding Diwali to the school calendar as a day off, the board reviewed a decision-making criteria chart for several holidays to determine whether there should be days off from school, including Rosh Hashanah, Yom Kippur, Indigenous Peoples' Day slash Italian-American Heritage Day, Diwali, and Good Friday. At that November 14th meeting, while noting, among other things, the educational impact, loss of learning due to the pandemic, and extending the school year to the summer months because for a number of elementary schools, if not all of them, they do not have air conditioning, the Board of Ed unanimously voted during this first reading of the proposal to not add Diwali as a day off, to remove Rosh Hashanah and Yom Kippur as days off, and to keep Good Friday and Indigenous Peoples' Day slash Italian-American Heritage Day as days off. After a lot of public feedback, the Board of Ed unanimously reversed its decision to remove the Jewish holidays from the school calendar during its December 5th meeting. In a very long meeting, the members of the Board of Ed gave statements, and they shared that their initial decision was based on consideration of the best interests of our students and was not intended to be discriminatory or anti-Semitic in any way. They acknowledged the overwhelming feedback that they received at that meeting and previously, and rescinded their vote to open schools on the Jewish holidays. Or, they will open schools on, no.
Will not.
Will not open schools. I did say that the right the first time. Since Diwali does not fall on school day during the 23, 24 school year, the board, and the board only approves calendars one year in advance, the board anticipated voting on the approval of Diwali for the 24, 25 school year.
Very good, thank you. Bicycle and Trails Advisory Committee has a meeting tomorrow night. Economic Development.
Economic Development also has a meeting tomorrow night, and nothing new to report.
Great, thank you. Farmington Historic District.
We have not met since our last town hall meeting, but we do have one next Tuesday, the 20th year in chambers, at 5:00.
Great. Housing Authority.
Nothing to report.
Human Relations Commission.
The Human Relations Commission met on November 30th. They had eight community members on the call, and five spoke during public comment about the Board of Ed school calendar issue. Also, at the Board of Ed meeting on December 5th, one of their members, Anne Newberry, spoke on behalf of the Human Relations Commission and gave public comment.
Thank you. Library. Keith is not with us this evening. Town Planning and Zoning.
That would be Keith also.
Oh, that would be, nothing to report. Unionville.
Yes, thank you. The Unionville Historic District Commission met on December 1st. The commission approved the application for certificate for appropriateness at 2:30 Main Street to replace five windows as presented, and the windows will use a similar glazing to the existing windows. The next meeting is scheduled for January 5th at 7:00 PM.
Thank you. UVIA.
Nothing new to report.
Water Pollution Control Authority.
Yes, I gave you all a brief synopsis of a couple highlights from the WPCA, and I'll just read off a couple of them really quick. Just so everybody knows, that facility treated over 1.1 billion gallons of wastewater between July 1st, 2021, and June 30th, 2022. Throughout the time, the facility consistently achieved BOD and TSS removal rates of 98% to 99%, while seeing large increases in total nitrogen and phosphorus removal. This is achieved with lower chemical costs across the board compared to previous years. With construction of the hybrid primary settling tank from the previous year, the WPCA was also able to close out the 2021 calendar year under the nitrogen permit limit for the first time in its history. This came with the reimbursement from DEEP, from Nitrogen Credit Exchange Program, as opposed to a charge, a change from us because we constantly were buying the credits. So I just want to let those two little highlights go, and just, you know, say what a good job Mark and Russ and the rest of the crew at that facility has been doing.
And please be cautious of what you flush over the holiday seasons. Any other liaisons? Okay, hearing none. Now we move to item K, report of the town manager. Kathy, are you with us?
I am, can you hear me?
We can.
Good evening, everyone. You have the written report in front of you, I have a few things just to highlight. On November 19th, 2022, the Farmington Police Department was reaccredited. In short, the summary was impressed with the department's dedication to the professional law enforcement, its community policing efforts, its labor management relationships, and finally, its dedication to employee wellness. So we did get reaccredited, so we are very pleased about that. As Joey had mentioned, the 1928 Building Committee, the communications subcommittee of the 1928 Committee is going to be putting out literature about the 1928 building after the first of the year, and I just wanted to make sure, and as Joey described, that we were clear that if the referendum does fail, that the 1928 building would be demolished. So I'm looking, CJ, for the council to make sure that that can be part of the communications that go out for the 1928 building.
Sure, so I'm just going to ask for a consensus, we'll go right down the line, to clarify again, when we vote, at whatever point we go to referendum, the decision will be, do we keep and renovate the 1928 building, something that in our last survey, almost 80% of the population said they wished to have happened, which is why we're going to referendum. If we do not vote to save the building, it will be demolished, it will be leveled. So, does everyone agree with that as our options here? Brian?
I do.
Ed?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes, sir.
Rafina?
Yes.
Johnny?
Yes.
Keith said yes earlier. I think you have consensus there, Kathy.
Thank you. And just lastly, the reevaluation update. So the 2022 townwide reevaluation of all real estate in the town of Farmington is complete. Residents should be receiving or have received their new property assessments. The new assessment reflects 70% of the fair market value of the property. This reevaluation is required by law this year, and it's been five years since the previous reevaluation. So I just wanted to alert you all that this is going to be a revale budget. We don't have, we're, on the web, we're creating some questions and answers and some various things, but we don't know a lot of the information. We're not going to know how the reevaluation has totally affected everything until the grand list is complete. That would be the first thing, that won't be until the end of January. And then also, how the reevaluation's going to affect taxes is also going to depend on what the townwide budget is. So again, just to alert you to it, I think we'll be talking about it pretty much probably at every meeting, we'll be getting more information, but as everyone probably realizes, in the last five years, the value of real estate, residential real estate, has gone up. It's gone up all over the state of Connecticut, so people are going to see a different number on their tax bills, I mean, not their, on their, not on their tax bills, excuse me, when we send out the number. Their assessments are going to be different. So again, we just want to remind people, do not take that assessment and times it by the mill rate that exists today, that's not how it works, you have to wait till the new mill rate comes out. So again, we'll be working on communication, communications, to try to make it clear for people, but it is somewhat complicated, and this will be the first stage of it.
Kathy, and just to add to that, I believe we will be doing our revaluation again in four years by state mandate? Is that correct?
There, yes, the legislative group, yes, it's not going to be the five years, it's going to be four years. We're on a different cycle, so it will be four years, yeah.
Okay, and everyone, do we know, have they all been sent out yet, or they're just starting to go out, the revales to residents?
I think, if Joe is in the audience, I think they've all, I think they've all went out.
Okay, so the residential have gone out, but commercial not yet?
A lot of them have gone out, mostly the smaller businesses.
Okay.
Some of the larger ones probably have not gone out, some of them are still, I don't want to say negotiated, but some of them are still being discussed.
Okay. All right, so please, everyone out there, be patient until we have all of the information, it's really hard for us to disseminate what we don't have yet, so we're waiting for all of that. And as Kathy just mentioned, by the end of January, we should have all that information on the total grand list. Once we have the grand list, and we get to our budget season, then we see how that all factors in, and what the effect is on each individual homeowner and each business owner. So we've still got a little bit of waiting to do. Any questions for Kathy on her report? Was there anything else, Kathy, before you?
Nope, that was it.
Okay, any questions for Kathy? Brian?
I just had one question, and something that I heard Joey mention, I just want to make sure that I heard it correctly, that one of the things we're looking at is the rebuilding of the, if it's to move forward, that the high school may be transformed into the town hall? Did I hear that correctly, or did I miss?
The 1928 building.
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Okay, so that's where we're going to make that the new town hall?
Correct. Again, it would satisfy, you know, the requirements for probate, it would just alleviate the space, get the housing under everything for Nancy Parent and, you know, her group, and then try to reorganize or realign offices so they work more easily.
So they're all under one roof.
Only for them and the public.
Versus the numerous buildings, as you recall, when we went out and looked at all the buildings a couple of years ago, were sort of spread out throughout town, so this would consolidate our buildings under one roof while responding to the towns, again, almost 80% of the population who wanted to save that building.
And CJ, if I could add that.
Yes.
It's really, Brian, that the, that almost all the town operations would move into the 1928 building, it would be considered the new town hall. The building that we're in today would be the town hall annex, and the probate offices would stay in this building, and it would be spread out. The thought would be is that the council would still be using the council chambers down here, we wouldn't have a council chambers up there, and the probate would be in here and other community types of things. One thing that we've talked about is like the food bank would be in here, and potentially the small area of social services, which is kind of an individual where they like to be by themselves because of the clientele and some of the different confidentiality. So the thought is, is that social services would be in this building, probate would spread out, the food bank, there would be conference room space, space for the public in the town hall annex, and the operations would be in the 1928 building.
And just to sort of add to that, in addition to social services, the probate really needs more space than they have right now. To that confidentiality issue, there are a lot of personal issues that are going on. Where we have it right now is not ideal, but it's all the space we have. So any other questions for Kathy? Hearing none, do I have a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve to report the town manager.
I'll second.
We have a motion of second, any further comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed unanimously. Moving on to item L, appointments. We have one. Joe, you want to read, this is, well, here, there you go, read this one right here.
Thank you, sir. Make a motion for Agenda Item L10, that Art Marx be appointed to retirement board for the balance of a two-year term beginning immediately and end in January 2024.
I'll second.
We have a motion of second, and I'll just add to that, this is a motion made by the President of the Farmington Public Schools Employee United. They are nominating Art as their representative to the pension board. So, any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed unanimously. Okay, moving, we have no old business, new business, item N1.
Yes, and Agenda Item N1, I'd like to make a motion to ratify the tentative collective bargaining agreement between the town of Farmington and the Fraternal Order of Police Lodge Number 331 for the period of July 1, 2022 through July 30, 2025.
I'll second.
I have a motion of second, Kathy?
Yes, this, we were able to come to an agreement with the police union, this would be a three-year contract, which is retroactive from July 1, 2022 through June 30, 2025. In your packet, it shows the various changes, there's some language changes that are beneficial to the town, it shows the health insurance, the wages. I would recommend that you approve the contract. I think that right now, it's very difficult to retain, recruit police officers, and I think this will help us, it will help our police department remain competitive, and also be able to bring the best police officers into the town of Farmington. So I think that this is a good contract, that's fair to both the town and the police department. Just so you know, wages overall are moving, ticking upwards, so I think it is a benefit for us to settle for three years, and as you can see on the last year of the contract, we're coming, we're lowering the wages, and I think that's also beneficial to the town of Farmington.
Thank you, Kathy. Questions for Kathy on the police contract? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed unanimously, item two.
Agenda Item N2, I'd like to make a motion to authorize the town manager to work with the Farmington legislative delegates to request that the state of Connecticut convey the Parsons property to the town of Farmington to use as modified open space at a minimal fee to the town.
I'll second.
We have a motion of second, Kathy?
You have the motion in the backup, in your agenda packet, I did just summarize it because I know that we talked about it at length, I think the last meeting or two meetings ago. So this is just to authorize me to work with our delegation, but I wanted to make sure that we had clarity, that we were doing it as modified open space. That's what we were going to go to the legislative group with. I did have the alternative options on the second page of the note, option, if we don't do that, option one would be the state selling the property to the town of Farmington for economic development. We do have the appraisals, and it was, it would be for a purchase price of around $2 million. Or option two, the state selling the property to a private developer for economic development, which would take the town out of the process except for at the TPZ level. So I think those are our three options. In the past, we had talked about going for modified open space. I just want to make sure that that's still the direction that the council as a whole would like us to pursue.
Great, thank you, Kathy. Yeah, this, as most of you know, this has been going on since 2015, we've been having ongoing conversations, there have been different pieces of legislation that has been put in before the state. We, on the council, have had varying conversations about making this modified open space or potentially developing it. At this point in time, if we were to look into developing it, of which, when we reached out to developers, we had no interest whatsoever, it would cost the town $2 million before we could start that process, and if we go ahead with the modified open space, then we would get a nominal fee, we would have control of the property. Now, we're not limited, at some point in the future, and it's not anything I assume this council, or probably any councils in the near future would do, but if it's some future date, the town council wanted then to try and develop this property, they could always go back and ask that question, but then you'd be paying whatever market value is at that time. So at this point, we're just asking for a vote of, do we approve of asking our legislative delegates to request the conveyance of the property for a nominal fee? So any discussion? Hearing none?
I think we stay right with the course where we're at.
We always do have that option down the road, should we choose to find someone who wants to develop that property and work with the town.
And then we'd be going back to the state and asking them whatever it would be. But at this point, as we've said before, for modified open space, we'd be talking about potentially rebuilding a historic building on the site, as a welcome center, something like that, and there are adjoining properties in Jonestown, which are their own private property, they could potentially develop next door, so.
And, just to excuse you.
Yes.
And just to reiterate what Senator, Representative D'Amico said, this is not going to be, you know, done in one month, so please, when you're talking to your constituents out in the community, that, you know, the process is going to take time, it's not going to be done by January 31st, and obviously, we always get some of that blowback that, what are we doing wrong? Why are we taking too much time getting this done? So we're doing everything we possibly can.
As we have throughout this process.
And we can do the welcome center.
We can rebuild the historic building, but it will be modified open space for some people up here who have been talking about developing it, just want to be clear.
That's development.
Modified open space, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed unanimously.
Agenda Item N3, I'd like to make a motion to award a contract in amount of $68,200 for the acquisition and installation of communication equipment to convert the West Farms Mall site into a simulcast transmit site for public safety communications to Norcom CT of Nagato, Connecticut.
I'll second.
We have a motion of second, Kathy?
You have the written Agenda Item, this, this money is in the capital budget, and the purpose of the motion is to contract, to provide equipment and labor necessary to convert the West Farms Mall radio receive site into a simulcast transit site for public safety communications.
Okay, any questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed unanimously.
Agenda Item N4, I'd like to make a motion to set the registrar of voters Agenda Item N four, I'd like to make a motion to set the registrar voter's salary for fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second? That's a new job tonight, Johnny. Have a motion and a second, Kathy?
You'll have to amend this and put the salary in, but the registrar's of voter's salary is the beginning of each term by the town council. The current salary for our registrar voters is twenty-nine thousand four hundred per year. A recent salary survey shows that this salary is in line with the surrounding and similar towns. The incoming registrar voters are brand new to the position, but not to the Farmington elections. Both have experience working the polls on election day. Although the position is part-time, the registers ultimately bear the responsibility of running the elections. They also maintain and manage extensive number of part-time and temporary workers. It's my recommendation at this time that the town council continue to set the incoming registrar's salary at the rate of twenty-nine thousand four hundred per year. But it should be noted that the state legislative group will finalize the details for early voting in the near future. Once we understand the additional workload, I recommend that the town council reexamine the salary to see if it's appropriate.
Great, thank you, Kathy. And to clarify, we're setting a salary, and Joe's gonna add to the motion, the amount, twenty-nine thousand four hundred, which is the current salary. But when we see what the state legislature does, we have no idea how they're gonna try and roll out early voting and what that is gonna put upon our registrars, so we really have to see how that's gonna change their job. And after we see that, we may then reconvene and adjust what the salary is accordingly. So with that, any questions? Joe, you wanna do your modification and add that number in there?
Yes, I'd like to amend my first motion. I'd like to make a motion to set the registrar voter's salary for the fiscal years twenty-three to twenty-four for twenty-nine thousand four hundred per year.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. First, we will vote on the amendment. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Amendment passes. Now we will vote on the original motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed unanimously. Item five.
Item five, Agenda Item N five, I'd like to make a motion to approve the following tax refunds, and you will see that separate piece on your page. It was changed from the ones you received in your packet, since that was an old one.
Okay. Do we get a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed unanimously. We will shortly be going off to executive session. We will not be coming back online after that, so before we go, I will leave you with a quote from Winston Churchill. "We shape our buildings; thereafter, they shape us." With that?
I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session, discuss matters concerned to sale or acquisition of real property to adjourn the meeting to executive session as permitted by Connecticut General Statute's Section one dash two two five subsection A for the following purposes, to allow by section one dash two hundred dash six.
Second.
An attendance will be?
Sorry about that. The text would be the town council, the town manager.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Seven fifty-three, we are going to executive session.